The Pittsburgh School Committee, February first, two thousand and twenty-one to order. Ms. Ms. Harding, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure, sure thing. Ready?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America into the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. School Committee Chair report, I have nothing to report at this time. Resource Committee, Mr. Stevens.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Mr. Shalafu is gonna go over some things later with budget.
Okay. School building needs, Mr. Stevens.
Uh, Mr. Shal.
Okay, alright. Uh, Mr. Horgan, Policy Subcommittee.
Hello, nothing new to report. We'll probably be scheduling a meeting for later this month.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. Student Support Subcommittee, Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
Hi, so we we met on January twenty-first. We had a pretty extensive agenda. So we went over Pittsburgh's compliance with the new DESI guidelines for student learning time. And so the plan that Mr. Thompson submitted in the fall means that Pittsburgh still meets all the requirements even with their new declaration. We also talked about like an update about where our COVID rates are in the city at this point. And then we talked about just really the the idea that even though we can return to school, there will be about half of the population that doesn't go back to school and to kind of keep those kids in mind as well because they'll stay remote. The group has been lobbying for Pittsburgh to move up or, you know, urbans to be able to move up in terms of vaccination rollouts just because the burden has rested so heavily on urban centers. Uh, we got an update about club activity. Sue Turigny updated us about Twenty-First Century Program. A hundred and ninety-three students across the schools are involved in the after-school programs. Um, and then the other schools have a lot of other, like Memorial has a lot of clubs going on its own. Sue said that no kids are turned away from the Twenty-First Century Program, so that's maybe important for parents to know. We got an update that tutor.com is now available. I'm sure somebody's gonna talk about that tonight. We did, by the way, I'm gonna go public with this Superintendent Jokla. You did promise a TikTok dance to celebrate, so I did have it in my notes, so. So that's a promise.
Jean, it's not quite ready to go yet, but in the next few days, I'm hoping to launch it.
Okay, so that's gonna be a good resource for people. I know that like Mr. Roach sent an email about for freshmen and stuff. What some, I don't know, maybe people could talk about that a little bit more. And then we got an update from Mr. Roach about club activities and, you know, asked how kids are finding out about clubs and trying to really make sure that in addition to the sports offerings that we have, you know, a good sample of clubs that we'll be able to meet at least virtually. And then the esports club, that's gonna be interesting. That's being launched in the spring, so that's gonna be something that kids can hopefully look forward to. And then we got an update from Craig Shalfu, I'm sorry, Craig Antassi, sorry, Mr. Shalfu, from Craig Antassi about the sports program and how it's been operating. And it's done really remarkably well. He shared with us like the sway system that they're using to kind of track athletes and make sure that keep any kinds of possible possible infections like from going any further. And so then the school and the teams are having great support, great success. I'm sure the kids are gonna be talking about that with their update. And then we did ask about Title One and what the plan might be because we had, you know, heard from people that there were concerns about pulling Title One teachers into sub when we do go back into session. And I know that John is following up with that with all the schools. So, thanks. It was a lot for that meeting.
Very busy. Thank you. Questions? Seeing or hearing none.
Just a just a comment, an add-on. I was gonna save it for communications, but I'll just say now because it arose in that meeting. It is really important for the legislature and the governor, most importantly, to understand that because we are an urban district and our kids don't have the same advantages of, you know, smaller towns, especially, you know, closer to Boston, that the governor needs to be aware of the very crucial needs of Pittsburgh. And to that end, I drafted a letter requesting that the Gateway Urban, you know, community, the the schools in the Gateway Cities receive priority when it comes down to, one, vaccinating kids, but also when we're doing the rollout. And I had a lot of boldface in there, including, you know, the emotional, the emotional toll that this has taken on our kids and some of the information we've received from administrators about the the difficulty that some kids have had. You know, some kids can't, if someone in their in their home has contracted this virus and tests positive, many of our kids do not live in an environment where quarantining is even possible. There is not an extra room where a person can can be quarantined in. So I had heard some, you know, pretty sad stories from some teachers. So I shared that with the governor, and I want to thank members of the school committee who agreed to sign on to that letter. I sent paper copies to the governor and the lieutenant governor, Representative Kuschmerich, and to our new state senator, John Cronin. So again, we as on the school committee have a lot of influence. Our student reps have so much influence, and I hope you guys, you know, understand that when you write to the governor as students and when you write to your legislators, it will make a difference. But that was something that the superintendent mentioned, so we have we have sent off a letter. And because it's paper, I'm hoping we'll get a paper letter back in some kind of response. So that's that.
Thank you. Rowley. Any questions? Uh, School Personnel Committee.
I have that, Mr. Mayor.
And I have nothing right now, but we did have the superintendent's evaluation.
I have, I have that, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah. Uh, I met with Bob, but first thing, I'd like to thank all the school committee members and the mayor for completing the evaluation and getting it into daddy so we could. Um, I met with Bob previously, earlier in the year. And we went over a lot of his proposals, things that he planned on doing. And then we now have the evaluation, and I will meet again with Bob to go over this evaluation again. But I'll go over a few of the things. They have a superintendent who's committed to the best possible education for the students, the city of Pittsburgh. Pandemic has disrupted the excellent progress made by the Pittsburgh Public Schools. The superintendent Jokla has maintained a steady hand on our progress. Mr. Jokla was evaluated on the following standards. Instruction and leadership. Management and operate. Family and community engagements. Professional culture. The. Evaluation was done on a five-point scale. Under instructional leadership, Mr. Jokla got a four point five seven. Standard two, management. Four point seven seven. Standard three. Point seven oh. Standard four. National culture, four point eight five. His overall score was four point seven two on a five-point. A few of the comments that were made by the school committee. Bob worked closely with the assistant superintendents to make sure teachers are supported and lead. So curriculum is of high quality. During pandemic and before Bob, before Bob worked with teachers, principals, and his cabinet to make sure standard case units of instruction meet the needs of our students. Instructions. Gauge in remote format. We have high expectations for teachers. He's made every effort to see that the students receive the lessons and support during remote learning. Many new methods are being introduced in remote learning. There are unusual times we need to make sure no student is left behind. Bob has made difficult choices. Bob has made nimble, has been nimble and flexible. Bob's decisions are based on data. Goals are reasonable and achievable. Emotional and emotional. Investment in EBI, diversity, long exclusivity and equity. Many efforts to reach out to families. Use of all forms of media to reach and engage our our families. Collaboration with many groups helps Pittsburgh kids. Meetings, we stay on task and are productive. Makes every effort to meet the needs of the district diverse student population. Makes every effort to. Hear everyone and listen to their and to listen. Bob's dealing with COVID nineteen, the new crock of school, amazing. His use of the COVID emergency funds built school leadership throughout the school system. Bob listens to all sides of the discussion. Those were a number of the comments made by you, the school committee. So I'd like to, again, just thank Bob for being our superintendent, doing the great job he's doing. Any comments? The, I will go over this with Bob, so if he has any reaction, he will see who made all the comments. And. That's it. Any questions?
He, uh. Peter, the the code word for the Normandy invasion was Operation Overlord.
Right.
Dwight D. Eisenhower was the right guy for the job.
Yes.
And so is Bob Jokla for this.
You bet. You bet. Right.
Dwight D. Eisenhower. He almost looks like him, too.
I think my hair is getting grayer like Dwight D. Eisenhower's. So I think, well, Mayor and and Mr. Stevens, I just want to thank you for your, the entire school committee for your comments and your feedback. And I'm honored to to lead the team that we have in place throughout the district during truly historic times on a lot of fronts. COVID, what's happening socially in our country. And, you know, as we are continue to focus the school district with our, you know, goals and theory of action that, and it's high standards that all our children can grow and achieve. Again, this year, we have the third time a student accepted to Harvard University in the last ten years. You know, we're continuing to work on the equity front with making sure our students and our families feel that they are, that they belong and feel supported, especially during these times which are challenging, to say the least. And, you know, we're just trying to make the school better every day and for the remainder of this year and and laying the foundation for next year. And I think tonight, during, you know, the presentations, we're we're gonna hear a little bit about the past. We were able to make a lot of progress on some attendance and chronic absenteeism, but also the the foundation that we're putting together for the future. So I'm honored to, you know, to to hold a role and to lead a group of dedicated professionals to make Pittsburgh a better place. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Any other questions or comments? Student reps, do you have anything to say?
Yes, I have a bit to say.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so first, first off, I'm starting. On behalf of Jack and I, we would just like to say thank you to everyone for being here and for allowing us to be your ex officios for the year of two thousand and twenty-one. So first of all, my name is Andrea Harding. I am a member of the junior class. I am a proud member of both Honors Academy and NHS. I play field hockey in the fall and lacrosse in the spring. I am also the vice president of the Current Events Club and a member of the Student Advisory Council. I am a customer service employee at the Water Street Market Basket. So that's just a little bit about me. Some general information, today marked the start of semester two and quarter three for students. Today also marks the beginning of Black History Month, which is an important part of our Pittsburgh Public Schools community. As we all know, as of right now, students are indefinitely following the remote learning model.
Great. Hi, I'm. Hi, I'm Jack Mara. I'm. Hi, I'm Jack Mara. I'm the second ex officio for Pittsburgh and for FHS and all the school. And I am involved in Honors Academy, I'm also involved in Student Advisory Council. I'm the treasurer for the class of two thousand and twenty-three class in that I'm also involved with a few clubs and I've done sports writing for the school in the past. And to start off with, we conducted a remote learning survey through the Student Advisory Council, which over six hundred fifty students were involved in. And some of the key takeaways from this survey is that if we look at some of the cons that are seen is that over fifty-five percent of the students had high stress levels in the online remote learning, how it is going right now. And if we look into that and to further that, over seventy percent of the students had a stress level of seven or higher on a one to ten scale. And then we see, we see another point where that there's many students I know want to go back in hybrid. One is safe, but then there's also many students who don't want to lose the teachers if we have to go back hybrid, not being able to come into the building for medical reasons as a point. And then to look at some higher notes is that many students right now feel their remote learning is just mediocre. There is more of average than positive than negative. And that point, and that we also feel, another point that was addressed is that a lot of students for many different reasons, like having the camera off in class. Over sixty-two percent of students feel more comfortable with the camera off. And that can be because of technical issues when having the camera on or issues in the background that they don't want people, other students, to see because of many reasons.
On a more positive note, many clubs and councils are still meeting remotely, such as the School Improvement Council, the Multicultural Club, the Student Advisory Council, and the Current Events Club, which was, I think, touched upon earlier, all the clubs that are going on. As of right now, the Current Events Club is in the beginning stages of partnering with Wrangled Elementary School to implement a tutoring and mentor program for fourth graders. This will have a high school student paired up and with the ability to interact with a fourth grader to try to provide help and guidance through these very interesting times that we're going through. Another positive note, which was again mentioned earlier, our winter athletics are doing very well right now. Our girls' basketball team is five and one. Our boys' ice hockey team is five, two and one. And then our boys' basketball team is two and four, winning their last two games against Lemonster. Last week, Winter Sports went six and oh against our rivals Lemonster, which made it a great week to be a Red Raider. It was also a great week to be a member of my junior class because thirty members from the junior class received nominations for the American Legion Two Thousand and Twenty-One Boys and Girls State. Bearing the cancellations of the trip due to COVID, students will need sponsorships from individuals and businesses in the area. Final applications for those are due on Friday, February twelfth. Some students in the junior class also received acceptance letters into the National Honor Society this Friday, January twenty-ninth. And then finally, for the class of two thousand and twenty-one, graduation is creeping up on them, which is a topic that is planned for discussion at the Student Advisory Council that is being held on Wednesday, the third.
Then we also ended on another point of snow days, which is a topic for discussion that many kids have had in the throughout this school and that many people miss, snow days. And some of the issues with having a snow day is that a lot of kids have shoveling or other things to do or do shoveling as a job, things to do before going on to class, and it's only a limited amount of time they have that to do. So one of the things that we thought would be an interesting take on it would be to do an asynchronous day so that you would not lose it, so it would be considered a snow day. But if teachers attempt outwork in the morning and then students would be able to receive that work and do it later in the day if they have something to do in the morning that could be happening in the first or second period class that at that time. And then we also, to end on a high note, we had one of the highest, we had the highest attendance rate of all time in Pittsburgh Public Schools with over ninety-two percent.
And we just want to say thank you.
Yep. Jack, you you mentioned young folks shoveling. Can you send them over to my house tomorrow?
Yeah, they can do.
I'll, I'll, I'll pay handsomely. Any, any help they can provide? Seriously, have them come over. Yeah, because I'll be, I'll be at the emergency room in traction after tomorrow, but, right. Any questions, folks? Thank you. Crazy times. Yes, yes.
So first of all, really great to see you, students. It's so nice to have you back in this forum. And really, you give us a chance to kind of follow up on things and see how, you know, kids are doing with these policies, right? And so I thank you a lot for sharing that internal survey. That's great. So I have a few questions about that. One is, so when you get figures back, like seventy percent have a stress level of seven or higher, what, what are people trying to do about that? I mean, there's, I mean, we're limited, right, on a lot of things, but I'm just curious if that is now going to the Student Advisory Council or whatever the mechanism might be to just try to talk about that. And a second piece, that's something else you said, Jack, is the idea of like what happens when we do go back to school? And I'm kind of curious how much you've, you know, at the high school and then maybe other people could answer, like how much people are talking about this at the other schools? You know, what the forum will be. So I I'm a teacher and and I teach hybrid right now. And so I have the kids in front of me and then I have the kids on, on computer, right? Like in the meat. And I'm kind of curious if you guys have talked about how that will roll out for you and and if, you know, you feel like you understand what that process will kind of be like? Because in Pittsburgh, you know, over fifty percent of the kids are not gonna be coming back in the hybrid system. So, so those are two questions. So like, what are you doing about the stress levels, if anything? And what, you know, what have you heard about, like, what it'll be like when you do return? And one final thing, and I'm gonna pitch it for, you know, what echo what you said. I know, maybe Superintendent Jokla, maybe you could talk about like how the snow day decisions kind of unfolded. But there are so, in my own personal view, there are very few joys that we're kind of like being able to 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 keep. And that is one, I think, that kids have often really loved. So I'd just like to, so those are three things, okay?
So to touch on the snow day thing, I think that, and it also kind of relates to your first question, what we're gonna do about the stress levels. And I feel as though if we, as students, were to have a day to kind of unwind and do things on our own time, I feel like that would be kind of like a mental health day for us. And I feel like it could improve like our performance in the classroom if we don't feel like, if we feel like some things that we've always had are like still being honored. Because like, you're right, like that is a joy that we've always had. So losing it's kind of, kind of not fun.
Again, I can touch on your first point. They're part of the survey, which I did not talk about, talked about what students use as a resource when they are stressed. And they did talk about a lot. There was a high percentage did, it was forty percent would use office hours. And then there was over fifty percent in talking about groups where talking to teachers or emailing them, then also talking in study groups with classmates and using online tools that they have found through the internet. I can say that there probably, there possibly probably is more that can be done for the stress level of these students. A lot of it is more learning, but it's much, not as like health, you could say, mental health related to say. And then, what was your second point again?
Well, just the only other point, thanks, you guys. You followed up nicely with those. But the only other point was like how much you understand what it'll be like for you and how much maybe teachers have talked to you about what it'll be like when you're, you're, you know, you're managing the home and the students in front of you.
So I personally, I personally was always staying remote, even if we were to go back hybrid at any point, like in the near future, I was gonna stay remote. So I do know that there are, I don't know what they're called, like big ventilators or what, something to like keep the air moving in the school. And I know that we were gonna keep like the windows and stuff cracked in order to like improve ventilation and other things like masks and sanitation. And I also have heard Superintendent Jokla talk about the the testing when we can help slow the spread by knowing if we have somebody that's infected in the school. And then other things, like obviously wearing a mask, sanitizing your hands, staying six feet apart, having some of our classes or having our like Learning Lab class be in the auditorium, so there's more room for us to be spread out, all things like that.
Let me tell you, too, I think I've gone into the building a couple of times once I had to pick up a book and then I did a PSAT, and I've seen more through that of like pictures, but that hasn't been, I would say, just like I haven't really seen pictures of the school, which I think could be a helpful tool to bring into the classroom to students of all grades and everything and to show how it's going to look and like how it's taped off and to show like a physical, you know, like an image of just how it is, I think would be a good point.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you, student reps. Moving on, approval of the minutes from the previous school committee meeting of January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one.
Motion, we approve them.
Motion made to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Call of the role, Ms. Greenlee, if you will.
Yes, sir. Mayor Dean Natale.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragan. I'm sorry, Ms. Cragan?
Yes.
Oh, thank you so much. Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds. I know she's here. I just don't see her.
She's muted.
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much. Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, we are unanimous.
Thank you. That was the, oh, now we need to vote on it, don't we? Or did we just vote on it?
We voted on it. Yeah.
Right.
Voted to approve, yes.
All right. Thank you. Executive session, no need for that, I don't believe, Mr. Superintendent, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. No communications?
Just one.
Yes.
Real quick, so the Janet Cragan Youth Art Awards are given every year by the Pittsburgh Cultural Alliance. I have reached out to all our middle school principals because those awards are given to two kids in grade six, two kids in grade seven, two kids in grade eight in our three middle schools as well. in our three middle schools as well as Sizer. I have heard back from McKay, but I still need to hear back from Longchamp and from uh Memorial so that uh the Fitchburg Cultural Alliance and I and our schools can um coordinate because we will be doing awards in May. We don't know what that'll look like, but I just wanted to put that out there. So Mr. Thompson, um, or Mr. Jokla, just if you can remind those principals to to get back to me on on the email I sent, I can certainly send it again. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Craigin. Uh, moving on, Superintendent's report, Bob.
Do we have, uh, I'll I'll just ask Nate Glenny, do we have uh the person available who submitted the public comment?
Is Nate on?
Um.
Is the person on?
Is the person on?
Do you have the he is not on. Do you have the comment, Bob?
I I do have the comment that Nate did text to me, uh, the comment from a parent.
Is it, is it uh Bob uh Gonya?
Yes.
He is on. He just, he just responded in the chat.
Okay.
Mr. Garnia. Mr. Garnia.
Does does FATV have to unmute him or can he unmute himself?
I don't know. Where's Glenny? Are you around? Nathan, you out there?
Right now, he's just an attendee, not a panelist, so he's not able to speak to us.
That that's uh.
He can't talk on iPad. Well, I'll, I can, I can read the question that uh
Yes.
was texted to me from Mr. Garnia. So um, hang on, let me bring up my texts here. It is, uh, the question is, what are the conditions for regular students returning to school? And what are the cost impacts due to the shutdown? So um, we're going to be.
Bob, he's on now.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep, yes.
Good evening. Yeah, uh, Superintendent, thank you for reading my question. That's pretty much it. I just want to know when when are the kids going back? Is it when everyone's vaccinated? Is it when we hit a a uh infection point that's low? Is it when the teachers' union approves? I mean, when is the point that we cross the line versus? I I don't know. I mean, when is that measurable set point? That's, that's the first question I had. And with all the kids being out, obviously, we've got to be saving in busing and energy costs. Uh, is that turning into a real savings for the city and what's happening with that money? And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, well, I'll uh start off. So is we're we're working um to try to get pool testing going. And you're gonna hear a presentation from our district nurse leader in a few minutes. Uh, basically, before a vaccine becomes available, uh, and teachers are in the phase two uh timeline, which began today and goes through April thirtieth. Um, but on the vaccination front, we, we don't have any timeline of when that'll occur. In the meantime, the state is making uh available to school districts across the Commonwealth um, six weeks worth of uh financial support to get pool testing going. Um, we have applied to become a pool testing district, which would um allow us to test all students and staff who opt to be tested and uh to see if they are uh carrying the coronavirus. Um, you know, having that availability combined with the uh recent downward trend in um test positive rates, uh, we're just a little bit above eight percent. Uh, a few weeks ago, we were at eleven percent. Um, are all, you know, positive uh factors to uh have us, you know, reopen. And we are in negotiations and conversations with with our teachers' union, but also we are receiving input from uh our families and um and from our staff uh across the district, guidance counselors and community organizations. And one thing that um is becoming more apparent is the the mental health strain um impacts of social isolation on our students and our parents and and the community. So we're all uh working together during some challenging tr- times to try to bring students and faculty back together. And um, while tonight I I can't give you a definitive date, um, we are working diligently and I hope to announce um something a little bit more concrete um in the coming days. Um, you know, as far as your second question in regards to cost savings, uh, we are saving funds on, and really the city is saving uh funds on the transportation line. I think on the um, you know, the heat and utilities, I don't know if Mr. Shalfo can chime in, but uh, as we have had staff in the buildings, uh, we are still keeping our buildings um you know, pretty, pretty, pretty much normal to what they would be uh if staff and students were were both in the buildings. So um, I think that answers your question, but if I didn't, um, let me know what I missed.
I I think you did. I just, you know, I know the s- the parochial schools are managing to open around communities around us are opening, Monty Tech's having class, so what's holding Fitchburg back? What's our problem?
Well, it's um, it's a matter of trying to put all the pieces together. I think right now the the last thing that we're trying to get in place is is the pool testing, which uh two months ago, we didn't have that. Um, we have taken a very, uh, I guess, strong stance in terms of the health of all our our students and staff and as our you know, community rate was higher, uh, when it was, you know, increasing and normally at school committee, I present a uh a trend of, you know, where the where the COVID positivity rates have been. Uh, but as I've said to the school committee, it's it's the totality of the situation and there's a lot of factors. Um, and you know, probably tonight for the first time, I can say that, you know, in at least in the last probably couple of months that a lot of the factors are starting to, I'll say, break in our favor. And um, you know, the your comparative statement of parochials in Monty Tech. Um, you know, we have mentioned that at prior school committee meetings and uh I I I'll say I I share in your frustration, every every district and school is different and uh we're working uh hard to to get our kids back and I, we recognize the the strain that it's putting on on parents and um, you know, we've postponed the start of hybrid six times. And um you know, we're, we're doing our best to get back as soon as possible and as I said earlier, I hope to have some uh more positive news in the coming days.
And what about the recent, you know, release from the CDC about transmissivity, transmissivity about students being very low? I mean, has that gone into the the uh decision making of when we're gonna get back to school?
Oh, yeah, I've I've shared that out with uh our team and uh and actually, on a positive note, uh, one of the activities that it said was the um highest risk was indoor sports. And of the seventy-nine student uh athletes who are participating in winter sports, we haven't had uh one case of transmission arising from uh students participating in sports. So on a positive note, um, an activity that's considered by the CDC to be the highest risk, we've proven we can manage through that. So you know, I would, I would hope that bodes well for us as we, you know, try to bring back students and, you know, we do have the PPE in place. We have, you know, uh purchased air purifiers uh months ago. Um, we're in the process of uh updating our ventilation systems and, you know, we can as after this week, probably it'll start getting warmer and, you know, we'll have the windows a little bit open to help with the airflow.
Okay, I mean, I have a freshman now who's playing basketball and he's one of the seventy-nine people you're talking about. I also had a senior went out last year and I gotta say, yeah, I'm I'm one of the parents, see, really frustrating. And I think this year's for all the best efforts of the teachers, it's not the same. And I can't wait to see the MCAS test. It's gonna show a gap and I don't think anyone should be able to deny that.
Well, um, yeah, clearly not being in person uh for teaching and learning is uh is having an impact, no doubt. And, you know, when students and staff return, uh, you know, we'll be working hard to assess where, you know, where our students are at and and help them build on their assets.
All right, I I know it's a tough time. I'm just, these kids gotta get back. Can't, I don't want to wait till April like the president's mentioned, you know?
I, I, I understand that. And um, I, I, I hear your frustration and we're working hard towards it.
Mr. Garnia.
Thank you.
We we hope we're not, we our aim is to get back as soon as possible and I'm hoping I'm hoping it's as the superintendent said very soon. I hate to, I hate to be that broad about it, but I share your concern and um uh, I I think we're getting to that, we're getting to that uh that point where we really do have to uh we have to come back, bring the kids back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Bob, do you want, are we going into your report?
Yeah, I think we'll uh get started. I believe uh Jeremy and Tabitha will get started about an update and uh really a modified request for the trip to Walt Disney World that uh was one of the events that was impacted by the um, by the pandemic last school year. So uh, Jeremy and Tabitha.
I'll turn it over to Tabitha, I'm sorry, Tabitha. I'll turn it over to um Ms. Greenleys, the music teacher at Fitchburg High, not the the other Ms. Greenleys who we, who's here. I think they know each other. Um, but yeah, we were talking about a month ago, maybe a month and a half, you know, about that trip that really has been planned for a long time and there's been a lot of effort put in by the, you know, certainly Ms. Greenleys, but you know, the parents and supporters of our of our great band program and music program. And so, you know, with the pandemic, obviously, we were not able to do that last year, but there's, there has been quite a bit of um, you know, money invested in this as well, individual money. So we're really looking to find a way to, you know, provide this opportunity for kids. So so that's what it's about tonight. And I know um, Tabitha has has some more specifics about how we might be able to do that in a safe way because obviously that that's paramount.
Thanks, Jeremy. I'd just add that um, so initially you approved for us to travel in April of two thousand and twenty. Um, we postponed the trip um to June of two thousand and twenty and then postponed again until June of this year, two thousand and twenty-one, um, all because of the uh because of COVID primarily, but also because of concerns with Disney, like not being able to actually have performances um, because they are not scheduling them because of the pandemic. They have a limited um numbers of people that are allowed into the park on any given day. And for us as a school group, that would be a huge um burden because we could potentially perform in the morning, be returned in the afternoon and not be able to go back into the park. Um, and most recently, this like kind of latest request to pro- to postpone yet again is because Disney is now no longer booking any performances. The earliest that they're looking is September of two thousand and twenty-one. So even if we ask to postpone from June to July or August, there's no significant change in those summer months. Um, you know, there's, there are great positivities in terms of moving forward um with the vaccine rollout, as long as it is kind of right maintaining on on track because the governor is saying for us, April to June, the general population. Um, so we, I'm requesting that we can postpone yet again and have approval to postpone uh and then to continue to plan to travel in December of two thousand and twenty-one. So December sixteenth to twentieth of uh December, two thousand and twenty-one. That's the new kind of proposed dates. The trip would remain in essence, exactly the same as you have already approved for us to do back in April of two thousand and twenty. Um, which would be that we would have a performance in the park, marching down Main Street, USA. That's a thing that we had to apply in order and audition in order to to achieve, um, that we would also have a workshop present um where we work with a Disney clinician for almost three hours. Um, and they give us tremendous feedback on what we do. It's a incredible opportunity for our our young musicians. Um, and potentially because this new date op- opens a new opportunity, we could potentially also include students from our choral program because during the winter months in December especially, they have a candlelight ceremony that occurs. And so students would be able to join a masked choir of um professional musicians like Disney, um, Disney singers, as well as a professional orchestra. And that's something that is a possibility for us in December, which doesn't exist. Um, the candlelight opportunity doesn't exist in the springtime. So um, December is also kind of the absolute latest that we can postpone it uh and not incur any penalties or lose our opportunity to go because if you deny us being able to to travel um or to postpone again, then we would be out a significant sum of money, like almost all of the money that we've paid towards our trip. So it's really um in our best interest financially to be able to postpone. And also I know that there's no way that you're gonna approve for us to travel in June as it currently stands um to just have a banned vacation because there would be no performance opportunities for us in June. Um, yes, so that that's the, that's the request um, to be able to continue to plan and continue to work around a possible departure for December sixteenth to twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Tabitha, do you know the specific dates in December yet or am I missing?
Yeah, the proposed dates right now are December sixteenth to twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. And one of the reasons to postpone to that later time is again, we've, we've now needed to postpone for two graduating classes that might not be able to come. And so thinking about them and a potential that we could, that they would still be encouraged and, you know, willingly accepted to come with us, that time period could potentially be after a winter recess at college. And so you know, we would still offer again for the class of two thousand and twenty to come and the class of two thousand and twenty-one to be present. And there would be some flexibility in order to allow for them to travel if they're out of state at college, like to kind of meet us there. Or if they would need to only come for, like, we would travel on a Thursday to Monday, but if they needed to be back or needed to stay until Friday for midterms, we can make kind of all of those accommodations. But that's the, that's the thinking by by delaying it um a little bit further, rather than trying to go at the beginning of December or the second week.
Yeah, but the, that was gonna be my question about the current seniors.
Yeah.
I think that's a wonderful idea. If uh they're willing and their parents are willing to let them go, um, I would be very supportive of that. I'd let them go in June.
I mean, we just can't propo- pro- perform in June, so that's the
I know.
That's the problem.
Tabitha, I also had that on my mind. I was very happy to hear you already uh thought of those other people that had missed prior, great.
Yeah, I mean, there's no way that we could have um expected that when I came before you in September of two thousand and nineteen to plan for a beautiful two thousand and twenty trip that we would now be, you know, almost two years away.
Are all the uniforms in?
Yes, all the uniforms arrived um kind of in in May and they've been um they are stacked and kind of hanging in our in our uh storage room, ready to be displayed for the world. You know, we, we didn't have a competitive marching season in the fall, and so we didn't have that opportunity to have them be uh displayed and presented. So yeah, this might, we'll, we'll see. We'll see what it looks like for the rest of the school year for being able to get those uniforms on some kids.
Okay, any other questions? Oh, what am I, why am I speaking? Bob, this is yours.
Yep, I guess, did you want to uh, did you, did you want to vote on um their request now?
We, we can take that out of, out of.
We, we can take that out of, out of, all right.
You, you making that in a form of?
I'll make the emotion that we let the, uh, band go to Disney in, uh, December of 2021.
That would be actually, I'm 21 dash 39. Prove the superintendent recommends to Walt Fitchburg High's music environment to reschedule travel dates to Walt Disney World Florida, participating in Disney Performing Arts Workshop. Original date was April 23rd, 27, 2020, changed to December of 2021. Motion made. Is it second?
Second.
Motion made in second, Ms. Greenlee's? Call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Uh, Ms. Mayor DiNatale.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragan.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Horgan.
Yes.
Yes, we are unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Hope to see pictures of all you in Disney in December.
Okay. Moving on, uh, tonight we have another update from Dave Simmons of our Nutrition Services, uh, Department and SEDEXO, talk about the new program, which has, uh, proven to be a real, um, real need filler, uh, during the, this, uh, ongoing pandemic, so, Dave, I think you have a presentation you're able, sure.
Thank you, Bob, yes, let me, as I share my screen. Um, I presented a couple of weeks ago, and I shared that presentation that we had, um, just that afternoon, been given approval for a new meal program we were going to try, or, or going to roll out, I should say. And we have, um, got that program been running, and I just wanted to give you a quick update on it, so, um, can everyone see my screen, the presentation, Fitchburg School Committee Nutrition Services update?
Yes.
So, um, in addition to the current meal programs that I've, I've told you folks about, uh, since the pandemic began, we started a new one a few weeks back. Uh, it's a weekly meal bag program that we started, uh, in earnest on, on January 21st, again, in addition to our regular meal program. Uh, families may participate in this new meal program as well as, in addition to our current meal programs, this doesn't take the place of those meal programs, it's just another option for families, so what we're doing is a, a weekly meal bag pickup, uh, excuse me, for families, where families can come and pick up, uh, a bag of food, uh, it's got seven days worth of breakfast, seven days worth of lunch, uh, in those bags currently, um, with, we have some plans to add some additional items to in the coming weeks. Uh, it is a contactless afternoon pickup from 2 o'clock to 4 o'clock, we identified some, you know, for a lot of families, uh, get, getting to our meal sites to pick up during lunchtime was a hardship, so we wanted to find a way to give folks an opportunity, uh, in the afternoon to be able to come. Uh, we started the program at Crocker Elementary a couple of weeks ago, uh, since then, so we've had two meal services at Crocker, uh, we're having our third this Thursday, and we've added Memorial Middle School as an additional pickup site, starting this Thursday due to the demand, and we do have the, uh, capacity to take on a couple of more schools should the need come up, uh, meal bags are for anyone 18 or under. Just a sample here of what you're getting in one of our meal bags, they've got a gallon of milk, an assortment of breakfast items, fresh fruits and vegetables, um, uh, some take and bake, um, lunch options, we also provide, uh, some sliced deli meat as well as sandwich rolls. Comes in a bag, uh, meets the USDA requirements for breakfast or lunch for seven days per child. Uh, just some pictures of our first day over at Crocker, it's, like I said, contactless, folks drive up, let us know how many bags they ordered, no names are required, um, pop the trunk, we put for, for each bag they, they've requested, they've requested three, they get three bags and three gallons of milk, two bags come with two mouth, gallons of milk, and so on. Us, our Nutrition Services landing page from the Fitchburg Schools Nutrition Service, uh, Fitchburg Tools website, take, go to the Nutrition Services page, um, we do ask folks pre-order, because we are gonna be, but we're preparing a lot of bags, and we need to make sure we're not, uh, that, that we can, that we make enough, first of all, and, but don't make too many where we actually have some food waste, it's very simple, uh, to use the order guide, uh, or form, um, down the bottom there, click here to order your weekly meal bag, and it brings up a simple Google form with a explanation of the program, and simply let us know how many bags you would like to pick up. We asked for an email address, so, just so we can send out a, a, a pickup reminder on Thursday morning, some folk, you know, the, 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 the order form is available starting on Friday, uh, a lot of folks order on Friday, maybe they forget Thursday, so we send an email address. Uh, and this week we've added, uh, folks can pick the school that would like to pick the meals. Dave? Our social media messaging that, um, that's, uh, I've worked with, uh, Chad Garner with, um, we're sharing these frequently, uh, you know, the link to the order form information, um, you know, sharing pictures and whatnot, uh, just to get the word out. Um, so the first week we did it, January 21st, we handed up, we had 3,374 meals in two hours, uh, it was a great success. Um, so at the time when I made this, put this presentation together on Thursday to get it in in time, we hadn't done the service yet, so we had estimated we were gonna hand out about 4,500 meals, last Thursday we ended up handing out over 5,000. 400 bags, individual bags of food. And we are asking for pre-orders to ensure we have enough meal bags each week. Um, mentioned we've added Memorial as an additional pickup site. Um, I expect our capacity this week to be right around 600 bags or 8,400 meals. Uh, that's what we're, we're shooting for, uh, and we have the ability to expand to two additional sites that we have in the works should demand need it. Um, my estimates are that we probably accommodate about 17,000 meals per pack out, um, based, if we had to add, had to add additional schools, so, um, you know, we're gonna monitor the participation and, you know, find a way to, to be able to make sure anyone who needs one can get one. Uh, the afternoon pickup gives families more flexibility and convenience for accessing meals. Same rules as our other meal programs, anyone 18 or under, enrollment in Fitchburg Schools is not required, and residency in Fitchburg is not required. Uh, same as our other programs, meal bags can be ordered and picked up for friends, families, neighbors, et cetera. And, and we're always promoting, follow the Fitchburg Schools social media pages for updates on these programs, as well as other updates we have. Sent out an update this morning, we were, uh, canceling meal service for tomorrow, but when we do that, we make the decision early, so we can let folks know they can pick up extra meals on Monday, so they're able to have food at home, uh, for Tuesday, so. And that's it, I, I had teased this, this, uh, 11th hour approval we got, and I just wanted to give you an update on that, we've successfully implemented it, and it is going, uh, great.
Dave, this is Jim Walsh, I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
Um, so, on the dates, um, let me get, I gotta find the right page here.
Yep.
So, at Crocker, the seven-day meal pickup is always on a Thursday, and at Memorial, it's always on a Wednesday?
No, they're always gonna be on Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
Always gonna be on Thursdays.
Okay.
Thursday, it's, it's, for a lot of physical reasons, uh, buildings close a little bit earlier on Wednesdays, you know, when we got our orders in, um, it's Thursday, it's just made the most sense, logistics.
Isn't, isn't February 3rd a Wednesday this week? That's why I asked.
That may have been a typo, and if it is, you are correct, January, uh, February 4th is the pickup for this week, so.
Okay.
Action to that, it is February 4th.
And, and it may be on the sheet in your, uh, PowerPoint presentation where people sign up. How, if pickup is on Thursday, they could send you a request like late on Wednesday evening, or is there a cutoff when, obviously you have to prepare? And so I didn't know what, what the deadline is for requesting a pickup on Thursday.
Yeah, sure, our deadline is 8:00 AM Thursday morning.
Okay, great.
Provided we haven't reached our max for the week, um, we, we have, the first two weeks we did it, um, the first week we did it, we, you know, we were, you know, sort of, I don't wanna say flying blind, but we weren't exactly sure, so we heavily advertised it, and, um, but, but the order form was opened on Friday morning, by the end of the weekend, we had to turn it off because we reached our maximum that, that we've, that we felt we would be able to accommodate on that Thursday. So that Thursday came, and when we, um, you know, were able to serve all the meals that we prepared, and we realized, okay, you know what, we could actually up this for next week. It was our first time doing it, so many logistics, you know, just hundreds of bags and, you know, hundreds of gallons of milk, making sure we have storage, so, the next week, um, again, the order form goes live every Friday morning, and we were able to keep it open until Wednesday evening last week. Uh, so from Friday to Wednesday, Wednesday we reached the maximum capacity, um, because we had upped it by about 200 bags. Um, you know, folks came on Thursday, served the bags, no issue, and then that's what, but we had made the decision as we saw those orders rising, let's, let's put into place this plan to add an additional school, uh, to, to really increase our capacity. Uh, this time the order form is still open and still accepting orders for pickup on Thursday, and it will be until 8:00 AM Thursday morning, or until we reach our capacity, um, we're, we just passed the halfway point, and we're gonna do some advertising tomorrow, which will, which will certainly, um, help with that.
Thank you for answering my questions, and thank you and Nutrition Services for doing this and everything else that you've done since last, uh, what, March, when everything changed, so appreciate it, Dave, thank you very much.
Yeah, we just, we just, we're just trying to make it as easy as possible for folks to get meals, coming up with as many ways as we can.
Dave, I guess I just wanna add, uh, I just wanna thank you and the SEDEXO team for, I guess, being really flexible and nimble to meet the, uh, increased demand that where you projected 4,500 meals, and it was, uh, 5,000 meals. Um, you know, we're, we're meeting a need and providing a re, a valuable resource to our, our families in the community, so, uh, you're on the front lines of that, you and your team, uh, so again, I wanna thank you, um, on all the great work that you're doing for our families and students.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, um, so, over the last few years, um, our principals and staff at all our schools have been working diligently to, um, have our students, uh, come to school, and as we're ta, as we talk about improving, you know, student outcomes, and, you know, all our students can grow and achieve, it's important that, um, our students are, are in school for in-person teaching and learning, so, the data that, uh, Adam Runda is going to shortly present, uh, really summarizes the, uh, the progress over the last three years, and last year's numbers are cut off mid-March, uh, right, right as the pandemic hit. Um, so, Mr. Runda is going to give a, an update in terms of the, uh, attendance rate, which, uh, you know, our student rep, uh, mentioned about Fitchburg High School, but also the district, and about the attendance, and also the chronic absenteeism, which was one of the, uh, accountability factors that the state looked at. And, uh, again, we're probably one of the few districts, uh, in the Commonwealth la, last year that when, um, the transition was made to, uh, remote learning and MCAS not being administered, uh, we're a little disappointed because we feel that, you know, just looking at some of these results, uh, the efforts that we were making on the academic front would have, uh, helped out, uh, more than one of our schools. So, um, Mr. Runda, take it away.
Good evening. So, in the 2017-18 school year, um, the state changed, uh, how they measured our accountability, and they started to add attendance and more specifically chronic absenteeism into our over, overall accountability rating, so, um, 10% for elementary, middle, and it count towards 5% of, uh, high school scores. Uh, at that time, all of the schools in the district had a significant issue with the number of students chronically absent. Um, schools all took a, a fairly similar approach, though I think it was cell street, uh, under then-principal John Thompson, that really kind of solidified uh, the types of meetings, uh, that we, that we did run at that time, and we have continued to run since. Um, these meetings were scheduled with, um, principals, uh, mental health staff and the school and community partners, including DCF, to identify and remove barriers to, um, uh, from children that were, were not attending school. The, um, percent of chronically absent students decreased in all of our subgroups. Um, our next step, since we have, we, not that we're plateauing, but, uh, for our, uh, attendance issues that can be solved with, um, meeting with parents and identifying those, uh, not simple, but, um, th, those barriers, like keeping kids, uh, out of school, the next step is really, um, implementing a tiered system of social emotional support and improving our tiered system, ac, academic support, and that would include some curriculum changes. So to look at the, the data, um, this is Fitchburg as a district, as you can see in this first graph, uh, district attendance rate past three years, that our numbers are all trending in the direction that we want them to go in all of our subgroups, so, overall, our attendance rate, uh, is 93 and a half percent, uh, for last year. Uh, but if you look, um, you will notice that in all of the subgroups that it's, um, uh, it has, it is trending up. Um, there, there's been a steady improvement each year. Uh, same with our number of students that are chronically absent, it's the exact opposite trend. Uh, we want that number going down, uh, and it is, and we can see that this is working, um, in all of our subgroups. Uh, this next slide is Fitchburg High School as an individual, and Jeremy, feel free to chime in if you like, but really, it's showing the same thing, um, the attendance rate is improving, and with that, our chronically absent is, is going down, now, there, there is a bit of a blip of the chronic absent, uh, but that does kind of have to do with, uh, in my opinion, uh, when attendance stops March, some students who would not have been considered chronically absent, um, if that attendance went through June, um, were marked as chronically absent, because it's, it's, it is measured or determined by the amount of days that you are enrolled, um, compared to the amount of days that you are out, so if we have a student who is in school only with us for 10 days, and, and that does happen occasionally, and they miss uh, two days of school, um, that, that, uh, student would be considered chronically absent, so, the, the, the ending in March, I think hurt us a little bit there, but, um, uh, as Mr. Roach, uh, sent out in, in email, this is the, uh, the best attendance rate at Fitchburg High School, uh, since it's been measured, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, we hadn't ever really gotten into the 90s up until recently, and, um, you know, I think as we, it's great to see that across the board in every school, you know, being a participant in the Administrative Council meetings, um, I can say that, you know, the, the central office team has really supported all the schools in making this a priority, I mean, as you recall, we had a couple of excellent banner, um, billboards, I should say, across the, the city last year. We've embraced, you know, ideas like present, prepared, and positive, and trying to put that into effect, and it's taken time, but, you know, I think at Fitchburg High and, and Jack and Andrea can, could speak to this as well, I'm sure, but, you know, it's a focus, and then we, we've tried to simplify it to a, to an idea like present, prepared, and positive, because we know, you know, we have to have it so, that's on the forefront of everyone's mind all the time, parents, students, teachers, always talking about it, always in expressing and, and reiterating the, the importance of being with us, you know, being present, being in the classroom, being present, you know, in your, in your focus too, but, you know, all those different aspects, and when I look at, you know, some target areas that we knew we struggled with, were certainly students, um, in our ESL classes, and we were really proud about some of the growth, you know, that we saw there, and in, increase in attendance rate, we'd never gotten to 90%, and that's limited English proficient really is the ESL programming at Fitchburg High, and it's not an insignificant amount of students, you know, it's a lot of kids, and convincing many of them to, you know, that they needed to be present, they needed to be with us, was really, the team did an un, unbelievable job, you know, and you can see the decrease in chronic absenteeism rates there too, on, on the, um, comparison chart, so. We set a goal of 92% 10 years ago, I'll be honest with you, there were many Februaries where I thought, man, this will never happen, you know, those Februaries where there's, there's like heavy snow all the time and real struggles getting kids in school, and it's like that lull time, and, you know, like this weather over the weekend where it's 10 degrees out, and, and that type of stuff, but, you know, I gotta just say, and, and, and the kids, the, the parents and the teachers have really, um, you know, done an amazing job in, in that, and, you know, um, you know, done an amazing job in, in that and, you know, we'll get back to it, you know, once, once we, we, um, overcome what we're dealing with now with pandemic, remote learning and all those things, you know, our district will, is strong in that sense and we'll get back to it. Because again, I think that, you know, it's been a focus, not just at Fitchburg High, but as I said, in a lot of the discussions we've been having for the past couple of years.
Yeah, and, and tonight, we're, you know, we're only presenting, um, the district level in Fitchburg High. We, um, completed, uh, this compilation of data for each schools and internally shared that out with each of the principals for them to share with their staffs, but, and, and they're representative of, uh, inconsistent with the trends, uh, here at Fitchburg High and the district overall. So this is, you know, an effort that is really wide and deep, uh, amongst all our schools, uh, to show these trends over the last few years. So, and thank you Jeremy and, and all the principals and, and staff who played a role in this.
Congratulations Jeremy. It's, it's, I lo- I love the fact that all of our subgroups, though they're not exactly the same, you could really argue that within the margin of error and there really is no equity gap as far as attendance rate goes. Um, it's, it's great to see and you don't see that often with attendance.
Yeah, like I said, it's been a great team effort, um, you know, and, and it's, and I think to, to what you were describing, Mr. Rinder, about John Thompson's approach, that the, the individual one-on-one conversations is a lot of what impacts this type of thing. You know, once we kind of got the, the momentum going, I would say, you know, in our school and I, and from what I know in the other schools too, um, a lot of it is really, the momentum is maintained by an individual teacher having a conversation with an individual student, an individual VP calling a parent and having a great meeting with them and their, and their, and their child, their son or daughter. You know, a, a phenomenal paraprofessional, Mr. Kimber, you know, many know him, our home monitor, having these conversations day in, day out with our kids, the school resource officer. I mean, really a full group effort and, and again, we really felt about momentum up until March and we'll get it back, you know, it's, it's tough right now, I'll be honest, but I think it's tough everywhere in, in this particular school year. But we'll get it back because I think the foundation was there and, and as I said at the beginning, you know, the school district administration has really supported the schools and making this a priority. So we're grateful as well.
Um, Mr. Roach, I'd like to say that the different, uh, meetings that I've taken part in, I actually hear the students be proud of this, uh, this rate. And, uh, that wasn't there before. It was kind of like, you know, just kind of a question and a distant goal, but now they're proud of it. They shake their head and yeah, there's, that's, that means a lot to us. Well, it's good.
Well, thank you. They, they've made it happen. So I'm, I, I, I agree with you. They should be proud because they're the ones that have done it and, and really bought in and, and, you know, it's, it's a great, it's just enjoyable to be a part of that when everybody's pulling in the same direction.
Well, Jeremy, you, you set me up for a perfect segue to start talking about our kid system of social emotional support because it really is about those individual relationships and, and the individual action plan for students. So Bob, if it's okay, I'm gonna, I'll continue with that.
Yeah, that's, you, you, you've, you've made the bridge here to the second part of the presentation. So take it away.
Yep. So, um, Brian, Rowan, uh, Lisher and I have, have kind of spearheaded, um, the creation and i- and some implementation of a tiered system of social emotional support for Fitchburg Public Schools. And this system is really designed to help all students, uh, be available to learn by identifying barriers, uh, from that and then action planning to remove those barriers. Now, this is going to look different for different students because the level of, of need, uh, for students is different. As, as the, uh, level of need goes up, so does the amount of support and intervention. Um, some of our students, uh, will be able to just, uh, use our tier one approach, uh, while others may need, um, therapy or, or, uh, a, um, consultation with an outside support. Um, and it, it's really about equity and so social emotional learning and equity are tied together um, i- in every way. So it, you know, we've been talking about equity, uh, this year and, and Bob's, um, relentless in, in a good way about, um, about equity and where we need to go in the district. And this is, this is a big step into being much more equitable. Um, so each, each person receives the amount of support that they need. It's not about everybody receiving the same. Regardless of race, uh, ethnicity, language, disability, we're going to identify what each individual child needs to reach their full academic and social emotional potential and then try to provide that, um, so that, uh, everyone is available to learn. This is the menu of our tiered system of support. So tier one is universal. Everyone gets this. It's the day-to-day operations. It's, uh, how we do business. Tier two is really about, um, ten to twenty-five percent of our students who tier one support isn't enough. Uh, and then tier three is really targeted intensive. So some of the, uh, offerings that we have, uh, in our tier one, um, uh, district-wide classroom management system, uh, the code of character, conduct, um, uh, character education. Um, we're talking about, uh, fostering and supporting some climate. This is something, uh, right from the Castle website. I, I used to label this, the routines and procedures of a school that keep things calm. Uh, and a really, it's really a trauma-sensitive approach. Um, for our tier two students, um, students who really need a little bit more of, of a, uh, individualized plan. Um, there's, there's action planning with our mental health staff and teachers, uh, happening now. Uh, collateral agency, uh, collaboration, um, we have, uh, we're going to, uh, the offering parents, the opportunity to, to request, um, an S3 meeting, which is really a, a meeting that, that we will hold to identify what the barriers are and then action plan for that. And it could be as simple as a, a lunch bunch with a guidance counselor or a school adjustment counselor about, uh, some need or, or some, some issue that the, the student is having. Now, this gets really intensive when we go to tier three, um, and this can look like cognitive behavioral therapy, uh, replacement behavior therapy, a, uh, functional behavior analysis based on intervention plan and it can also include, um, a special education evaluation. Now, this is a living document that we're working on now. You'll notice that some of these are underlined and these are live links. So when, when this is presented to teachers, they would be able to click on this and get all of the documentation and support that they would need um, to understand what, what the steps are, uh, in this tiered system. So there's really three anchors, um, to our tiered system and it, they are, um, the code of character support and conduct, um, the S3 A- Academy and the, um, Michael Lind, it's about classroom management. Um, so we, we don't, we didn't really have a code of character support and conduct. Um, and Longjo had been working on this, um, for a couple of years now. Um, and I, I started to work more at Longjo last year in working with Jen Fisher, um, and seeing the work that, where, what they had started. I thought this would be important to kind of make district-wide. Um, so we do have a team that has been working on this and, and really what this is going to do is it's going to teach the behavior, behaviors that we expect, uh, which is just good teaching, right? Um, support our students and staff when barriers prevent, for, prevent them from meeting expectations and transition our discipline to restorative therapeutic and an educational, uh, process instead of being just punitive. Uh, some of the sections of the code of character, uh, support and discipline are the rights and responsibilities of, uh, school stakeholders. This will include students, parents, staff and the community. And it really spells out what, what we're going to do as a district for these stakeholders and really what some of our expectations are um, from our stakeholders to be involved in the educational process of Fitchburg Public Schools. It's, it spells out for parents or anyone else how to get help with a problem. If you are having a problem, if your, your child is enrolled in Fitchburg Public Schools and there is an issue, this will tell you exactly what you need to do and who to contact, contact and how to get output. It also outlines, uh, behavior concerns and violations and the corresponding responses that we're going to have, interventions and actions. So we're really focusing on eliminating the problem rather than just punishing the student. Um, this will list for teachers the level of possible interventions and consequences if needed. Um, and we're, and during this process, we're also reviewing some of our existing policies, um, and, and may make recommendations on how to update them.
So I'm going to talk about how we determine the need, um, and I'm going to start with the S3 Academy. So we, uh, applied, um, as a district to be part of this academy that's run through the state, um, and is overseen by Boston College in the Runney Center. And we have every elementary and middle school has a team that has joined, um, this S3 Academy. We, uh, learn a lot through the academy, um, and they provide a lot of, uh, documents to us to kind of streamline how to determine what level of supports, how to identify social emotional, um, issues for children and really come up with a plan, um, that will work for the student in the classroom. They, we are currently right now, um, we've identified a lead coach at every, um, building that is involved in this. And they meet with Adam Milit and I, uh, pretty much monthly, if not sometimes more than that, um, so that we can make sure the work is continuing to happen in all the buildings. So this is an example of one of the forms that, um, the S3 Academy has proposed to, um, our teams and they've been working on practicing this with students. Um, at least one student at this point, um, we're going to move up to practicing it with, uh, an entire classroom. And they really review all the academic, uh, family, home life, uh, health and safety and really talk about what they're seeing, um, investigating if there's other issues going on for the, um, child that's really impeding their progress, um, in the classroom. Then they come up with a plan, they implement the plan, um, over a period of time and then they reevaluate if the plan is working. So one of the ways that we really can dive into identifying, um, the data is we do have, um, the DESA, uh, online data and, um, it's also an educational system. So teachers and parents can go on and complete a rating scale, um, for children. It is, um, aligned with the Castle model on the, uh, social emotional competencies. And they, they complete the assessment, um, what we're looking at is twice a year right now, once in the fall and once again in the springtime. It rates children, um, within a model of a tiered system. So they're either doing fine developmentally, um, in these areas. There's some concerns and then there's children that will fall into, uh, the red with a lot of concerns. And then once they, um, can see what areas are weaknesses, this aligns directly to instruction in the system so that, um, staff can quickly access, um, lessons that will address the areas, uh, for the children. We also have been implementing Ruler, which is, um, the Yale, um, Center for Emotional Intelligence. Right now, we have, um, South Street, Ryan Gold, um, Memorial have all been trained along with Crocker. Um, we still, thanks to COVID, uh, had a slight delay, um, with the other schools, but they will be signing up for their online, um, institute. And so really what it does is it, um, allows this entire school staff to look at how do you build, um, emotional intelligence for your staff and your students? Um, so there's a lot of work that goes into, um, recognizing the emotions. That's the, um, I don't know if you've seen the box, uh, where you can put yourself in, um, whether you're in the red, yellow, green or blue. And then where do you want to be? And it's a lot of talking about emotions, um, how to label them and then how to get yourself, if you're not in a good place where you want to be on that scale, how do you get to be in a better place? So, um, there's a lot of training around that and then Yale offers, uh, online, um, system of support that, uh, teachers can, um, access.
So another one of our goals was to adopt a district-wide behavior management system. So this was done by forming a focus group of, um, staff and building administrators who reviewed various high-quality classroom management systems. And as a result, the smart classroom management system by Michael Linson was chosen. Um, part of the reason it was chosen was the, and part of the reason that we looked to, um, implement something system-wide, district-wide was because this will help the district support staff, um, in terms of professional development as well as developing peer, peer support within buildings, um, as well as helping students in their transition from school to school, grade to grade or even class to class. Um, uh, Michael Linson's, the smart classroom management system was simple, straightforward. Um, it included modeling of the rules and other classroom routines, uh, and the consequences in the classroom, uh, and parents were involved as well and informed. The student accountability and empowerment, uh, it had intrinsic motivation, high-quality work completion, um, parent communication. So, and that was a part that we felt that, um, was, was needed to continue as I think Dr. Renda says, uh, allow parents to be parents and be part of the process. And it also, it was equitable for all.
But going along, uh, the same lines as the smart classroom management, um, we have identified a character education program um, in all of the elementary and middle schools. And we came to, uh, the positivity project really the same way that we identified the Michael Linson smart classroom management. We had, it's actually the same focus group of teachers and administrators would get some, uh, high-quality like character education programs and, um, really we're at five of the six schools, um, chose the positivity project. One school holding out for, for something that, um, a different program that they have been using. Um, and I think it's really important that we use some type of character education program, uh, and not necessarily that everyone is using, um, the same one. But the positivity project is really about relationship building and about, um, building very specific character traits. Um, so these are the character traits that they try to teach. This is done in a fifteen-minute lesson that can be done during morning meeting. There's absolutely no materials for teachers to create. It is done for them. And with their, uh, the, the academic expectations on of our teachers to plan, they really couldn't take this on. Um, this is done, I believe it's fifteen hundred, uh, schools, um, nationwide. Uh, the reviews are excellent. It actually, uh, this comes recommended from a colleague who, who uses it uh, and actually helped design Crocker's, um, uh, character education. We had a homegrown, uh, character education program, uh, there for a long time. They're still running it. Uh, and to be honest, we, uh, we borrowed many of the ideas from the positivity project. Um, so again, this, this is a tier one. Um, so this will really, between this and the classroom management, smart classroom management, what we're hoping will do, uh, it will really calm the school down. It will take care of like eighty percent of the kids. And then that will free up mental health staff and administration to really deal with the twenty percent of kids who, who may be in crisis or need that more support. Right? So it's, it's, it's all about individualizing and building relationships with individual students. And it comes all, it, it all gets circled right back to, to equity. Um, this is going to help with diversity and belonging and inclusion. Um, and it, it really is one of the first steps that, uh, we can take to get to that cultural proficiency, um, that we really need to get, uh, to get to in Fitchburg Public Schools. So we have some next steps. Um, there is a institute called the Teaching Empathy Institute and they have, uh, an institute on belonging in school and it's, um, it's training for teachers. Uh, we've recently started to research this and look at it. It, it seems like it's going to be a perfect fit for us. Um, I think in Fitchburg, we do- I think in Pittsburgh, we do a really good job of welcoming our families. We welcome them in to, to things we probably have done for the past 40 years. Maybe there are some new things. What we don't necessarily do a great job of yet is having them, having them feel like they belong. So we need to transition to only welcoming families the way that we're comfortable doing, to really opening up and getting our families to believe that they belong and they're part of our community so that we can build that really, not only with our students, but with, with the parents and, and our other community stakeholders. So the next steps, other next steps for this is we need input from the rest of the school admin that have not been involved in this. Teachers, parents, students, other community partners and of course, school committee. We are hoping to roll this out and I can't see any reason why we won't be able to as a cohesive plan in 2021, 22 school year. Again, many of these aspects are already happening. Crocker and Memorial are piloting the Positivity Project. The S three Academy is happening in six of the eight schools. And we're, we're working on with the high school to run very similar meetings. They, they are running some meetings, but we're trying to tweak it so they're, they're more like that. We're ready to hit the ground running with the Smart Classroom Management. The, that PD was, was given in the first 10 days of school this year and it was completed by Principal LaVoy and Ms. McClure, a teacher at Memorial, are really the, are, are go-tos for PD on the system. But what we need to do is get that code of character support and conduct up because that's going to be the blueprint and roadmap of where to go for all of these and how to organize it in each individual school. And that's what I just said. So these are our teams as of now. So the Code of Character Support Conduct is Jen Fisher. You know, I'm not going to read the names. I'll leave it up there for a minute. And I do have one mistake. Tom DiGirano should be on the Code of Character Support and Conduct, not the S three team. And for anyone watching at home, if I left you off of one of the teams, my apologies. Is there any, are there any questions?
I, I have a question, Adam. Can you hear me?
I can, yes.
The, the screen previous to this, where, who is, where are you getting that from? What is it called? You know, the one you just had up prior to this, learning? It says micro-learning courses for educators.
Yep.
As you identified some of the programs, where you got them from, Boston College, Yale? I didn't hear where this one was identified, it's coming from.
Well, the Teaching Empathy Institute is, is a, is a company on their, 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 their own company. They, they provide training. I believe they're based out of Vermont. And they provide training to schools on, on how to build belongingness.
Oh, that, that is, it all seems really, really excellent, in-depth, comprehensive, wonderful. How can I learn more about this particular one, about all of them, but I mean, this particular one? Is, is this open for anybody or?
I, I mean, I imagine, I, yeah, I would imagine it would be open for, for anyone. When we, Rosemary, I'd be happy to send you a link to this or I could print out some materials and send it to you so you can.
I would love that. I would love that. It's actually on paper rather than on.
Not a problem. I will just make a note of that.
Love that. I'd like to take advantage of whatever it is. And if parents could involve, get involved with this, it feels like they belong, you know? Wonderful. My impression is it's wonderful.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, I, I think seeing or hearing no other questions, I just want to reiterate the importance of this work that Adam, Rowan and Alicia just presented to you and the community in general. And this is really going to be a foundation of, of who we are and what we do for the remainder of this year and in future years. So this is, it's one of our biggest initiatives and something that, again, as you can see from last slide, several names, but there's a lot of work that has gone into creating this this year. And we're going to reap the benefits for years to come. So thank you all. So I think we're ready to now move on to the pool testing update. And as I mentioned a little bit for in the, my comments to the parent who raised a question during the public comment, this is a very important offering that Pittsburgh Public Schools and a lot of school districts did not have a couple months ago. Not only was it unavailable, it was just unaffordable. So with the Commonwealth and a family foundation making available funding for the first six weeks of this program through the end of March, we have stimulus funds available to continue pool testing for the remainder of this school year. And, you know, testing our students to minimize the risk of COVID transmission or spread and identifying students will be key for almost every school district in, in the Commonwealth, you know, this year. So having said that, as my introduction, Kim, screen is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So I'd like to just give a little definition of pool testing. In its means, the combining of respiratory samples from several people and conducting one laboratory test on the combined pool of samples to detect the SARS-CoV-2, the virus that causes COVID-19. So just go back one slide. So this is like Bob had shared, this is an opportunity given to many districts, including ourselves, to take advantage of. And we are part of an available six-week launch of a program that'll run right through the end of March, March 28th, 2021. This is optional. And again, it's the selection, the samples to be collected and carefully tested throughout. There are three possible components. The pool testing itself, the By Next Now testing to find positive individuals in the individual PCR test in the case of the By Next Now tests, if there's not a positive. This will be further broken down in the presentation. So this is a picture of the process and it's the various steps that you go from one to the next. So as you read along, you start with the students and they suggest the testing. And it's actually staff and students, testing once a week. The samples are collected, they're brought to a lab. They are tested in the particular labs. There are three labs that Desi has identified and worked very closely with. The results are tested to see if they're positive or if they're negative. And then there are various protocols that we'll see that we follow. So the protocol for the positive testing is, as you can read along as such, if in fact, there is a pool that is positive, the next step that's suggested is the Abbott Now antigen testing that'll be done to identify which one of the individuals within the pool is in fact positive. And it goes on to see if there are no positives or if there are positives in the different protocols that you would follow along with. And I'll make a note here, I really want to commend the nurses. They have been very proactive in, in participating in this with the district. They are commended for being in the schools and available as the health resources. They have participated in the, train the Trainer Model of this By Next Now testing. There's training throughout the nurses in the district and so we are well-placed to go forward. So the rapid positive test for, for positives and negatives, and there are various options here. Option A is that if in fact, this is conducted in, in the, the timing of the results, so you follow up within the next couple of days. Or you'd follow up, you know, later on with a PCR test. Certainly a choice. It is something that the districts can decide. It is also something that would be discussed with the families as far as them going forward. The benefits of the By Next Now testing follow-up is that it is an antigen test where you get results within 15 minutes and have that available. It, with the PCR test, it is another test that is part of the pool testing, but this is just a little bit more time delayed in getting the results. So that's, you know, some of the considerations in going forward and in the next steps with the families, the individuals in the district. So there are responsibilities, not only from the vendors and this, the working with the DESI. They involve the training they, they offer, the support with the districts, the delivery of certain kits and materials, the delivery of the results. Generally speaking, this, these results will be within a 48-hour period of time. And then the platform for tracking, much like the grids that we saw earlier. Then there's the local schools and the district sides and their responsibilities. So they're responsible for the coordination of how this is going to be rolled out in the test. The, the responsibility of acquiring the consents that be from the staff, the students and their families. The collection of the specimens, the determining the appropriate pool sizes. Pool sizes range from pools of say, five samples to 10 samples, up to 25 samples. And that is all to be determined based on the community and the trending in, in working with these, these groups that are assisting and training us. The districts will continue to monitor statuses. They will follow up with the testing and if in fact, there are positive results, they will coordinate and inform the Department of Public Health. So we talked a little about the consents and authorization. Again, the Desi folks will assist with this in these processes with the various platforms. The, the best platform is through the, the technology electronics transmission of consent, but there is also paper consent. And again, there are different samples that Desi does put out. They are in English, Spanish, they're, they're vetted through all aspects of, of information and, you know, questions that have come up and in instructions of what you would need to know. And students, again, staff and students can, it's a choice to sign up for this. It is very helpful in, you know, the, the monitoring or assessing in a sense of, of those that may or may not have anything that could be with the disease spread. And, but regardless, students and staff would be welcomed to participate or not participate in this particular offering. So Bob and I had the fortune to reach out through various webinars and all, attended by other staff members as well, and also to take a trip to the Bronfield School in Harvard. And at the Bronfield School in Harvard, we saw firsthand the setup, what it looked like, how they conducted it, the different roles of the individuals. Just the whole entire process, which is extremely helpful. We, we listened to administrators and how it was rolled out. One of the wonderful pieces of this is that there was true community support, parent support, staffing, all that sort of thing. And so they're a school that is in session in hybrid and this is something that they've participated in with weekly testing. The other example is the Salem Public Schools. And they are also in hybrid session and conducting the pool testing weekly. And we do have a video that we'd like to share to give you a sense of what that would look like.
Can we add the volume?
Testing enables this additional layer of finding the virus before symptomatic students might show up or staff might show up and adding a layer of protection against the spread in schools.
I'm a proponent for, you know, pool testing as much as possible because I think it helps to identify, you know, pockets of outbreak.
So what you, what you saw in the video was the, the specimen collection, if we can go back just a couple? Great, thank you. In, in the way that they had obtained the samples, this was done right in the classrooms with the students. They would do their, the swabbing, they would take the swabbing. It would be connected to the particular identification in, in the particular tube. And then the students would be right back to their learning and all. There certainly is, is a whole protocol with the, the hand sanitization before and after and, and very carefully done. And again, this is another model that they've looked at. We're going to be working with vendors to see what's going to be the best model for our, for our district. So monitoring of the results. So schools would arrange to have these, these samples and these test tubes delivered to the lab for testing of the specimens. And again, that's, you know, generally speaking, a 48-hour process. And what they achieve to do is to get the results during the regular school hours so that you're within the hours of operation. And therefore, if there's any notification needed, we would be able to do that with students and staff and families. So a little bit on that follow-up testing. Again, if in fact, there is a positive, the, the recommendation is for this Abbott Now By Next Antigen Testing. There's something that is in place in several districts, districts, including ourselves. And again, certain arrangements following up with that, the processes of that. And the other option is in fact, to have a PCR test follow-up. And there, there are certain, you know, processes and regulations around that as well, follow-up. And this does not in any way eliminate the other protocols that we follow. So the social distancing, the hand washing, the, the mask wearing. It's, it's in addition to. And then again, the, the final is the, the offering of the, the PCR testing and the encouragement throughout that if anyone, students and staff are not feeling well, they would still follow the protocols, they would stay home, they would follow up with their own family physicians and get advice and testing for that. This is something to identify with the non-symptomatic means. So at this point, thank you, and open up for any questions or further explanation?
I have a couple of questions. Can you hear me?
I can.
I always have to ask because I'm getting a signal that something is poorly connected on my computer.
I see.
Let me see. Does the student or the person themselves do their own swabbing? I noticed that the student was holding up a, a, you know, something to, is it, is it professionally swabbed by somebody trained or does the individual person do their own swabbing?
Sure. So it, it could be either or. They do recommend that children second grade and above, and obviously staff. They do recommend that children second grade and above, and obviously staff are able to do their own swabbing.
I I'm uncomfortable with that because I think it's a tricky thing if that is. If I understand by what I saw, it's the injection up your nose to take a swab and
Yeah, it it's it's so sure, thank you for sharing that. And it's not, there are two different swabbings. One is the deep swabbing, this is not, this is this is in the 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 not deep at all, just in the the initial part of the narrows.
Well, I just see potential for harm if the students do it themselves.
Thank you, and that that would certainly fall into the choice category in the assessment category, yeah?
Okay, because I did hear a little talk about that and it's tricky. It's not, and the other thing is the slide went by fast, but you did have a footnote at one slide saying that if someone chose not to take that, they would be financially responsible for something in the future. It happened so quick, would you explain what that footnote was? Do you recall?
Yeah, so what they were referring to is that, and again, it's a district choice. So if in fact, the district did not want to go with the follow up Abbott Now testing, the antigen testing that I shared, which was a fifteen minute result, then it could choose to do the PCR testing, and that is an additional cost primarily to the district.
And you have any figures on that?
We did get figures, but again, that would be something that that once we're, you know, working with the groups that we would have better information on.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I I have a question, Pam, this is Jim Walsh.
Hi, Jim.
And and I apologize if you mentioned this. What what how are the pools determined? Is this like homeroom class or how do we determine what the pool of students and the the teacher is?
Sure, sure. So generally speaking, they they like to look at like a pool of like five to ten, that's that's kind of like a safe number. And again, if it comes back, you know, positive, that's a reasonable number to retest. With that said, they like generally no more than two staff in that pool of the, say, the ten with the eight students. And and just it just makes more sense that way for the follow up as well. They can, if if, you know, you're moving to a very low risk, some of the companies will go up to a pool of twenty five, but there's a lot of other things considered with that.
So we would have to be in some form of hybrid in order to do this pool testing, is that correct?
That's what's recommended, yes.
Thank you very much.
We'll share though that, you know, Harvard had actually had an offering with their staff prior to their opening. And that's the way they chose to roll it out.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Hi Pam, this is Jean.
Hi.
Hi. I guess like I'm curious about the Salem system because I feel like that's maybe a little closer, I don't know, to what ours might be, but did you get a sense from your visit there or communication with them that it had, you know, that it stayed off some kinds of issues in the school or that it, you know, they really saw like a prevention element of this or?
Yeah, they were one of the schools that we heard from in in all of the schools spoke very much of the fact that they felt like it was extremely helpful in, you know, identifying if in fact, there was a case, reassuring that there weren't cases, you know, with the negative testing clearly. And it's it's something that colleges have done, so it's a replication of 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 that as well.
Okay, thank you. And I I would just add like to for Rosemary's point. I mean, if if we had added use the testing for the clinics that the city was running at Cogswell, and that's the exact same way they do it, right? They just hand it to you and you have to swab and and put it in. So I think that that's like, I I don't, I I wouldn't be too concerned with the process of how people are swabbing because I I think the way that those tests are set up, that's the legitimate way to to do it and people aren't getting harmed by that, so, thank you.
Yeah, it's absolutely a choice and a comfort, yeah.
If I can just add on the Salem video, you know, we didn't get to see the whole thing, but the principal or superintendent talks about how having that pool testing did identify some potential cases, but also since they had started it from beginning to, I guess, when the video was made, their attendance at their high school increased from sixty percent to eighty five percent. And when Pam and I visited Harvard, you know, they've only been doing it, I guess, a couple of weeks, right Pam? But they they were able to, I think, identify one person who who may have, you know, been positive as well. So it works. It's just a matter of, I think, you know, once we find out the status of our application that we made on Wednesday to the state where we applied to do do pool testing at all our schools. And we to find out who the testing provider will be, we can start to kind of figure out how the process will best work, you know, in our schools and start working out the logistics here. So right now, we're waiting to hear the status of our application.
I just, you triggered something in my mind, Superintendent. Evidently, we've been very successful monitoring those athletes or the the sports people. Does this in any way duplicate what they're doing or are they more observational and not doing this kind of thing? Just?
They're not, they're they're not doing the pool testing now. They just have a system that I think track, you know, activity, I don't know Pam, you could explain their their system or tool that they're using. But they're they're not doing any pool testing or swab testing right now.
But whatever they're doing, they're very successful, right?
Yes.
Observational and reporting or something like that?
Reporting, right, contact tracing.
Yeah, yeah, reporting the from a questionnaire of questions primarily about their symptoms and, yeah.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I think Craig, we're gonna ask you to just bring everybody home on the presentations and give a an update on next year's budget, which the governor announced his proposal last Wednesday afternoon and, you know, how it incorporates the initial funding under the Student Opportunity Act, which is which is to help school districts like Pittsburgh, help our help narrow the achievement gap between the urban and the suburban. And also a little bit of an update in terms of the the S R two or stimulus funding that's available. So Craig, take it away.
All right, thanks Bob, good evening, everyone. And we did speak just a couple of weeks ago about our budget, quick budget update. And as Bob just mentioned, the governor's House One budget was released last week. And it will go through a number of processes and committees throughout the course of the spring before it's finalized. But it does, you know, we are talking about the Student Opportunity Act. And the preliminary House One budget for F Y twenty two was an increase of a hundred and ninety seven, almost a hundred and ninety eight million dollars statewide, which is a three point seven percent increase over F Y twenty one. And just a reminder, again, talking about SOA, this was a seven year plan, which we are going into year two of, which focused on five main areas to to create and provide equity across the entire Commonwealth. And it and it focused on providing increasing benefit support in in the fixed charges that municipalities have to deal with, increasing guidance and psychological services, special education out of district tuition, our English language learners and our low income students. And and I'll show you a little bit more detail when we get to the actual foundation budget and how that's calculated. But those are the five main areas of the SOA, the Student Opportunity Act. So and again, just looking at how it addresses equity and providing districts with a high number of low income students and in English language learners. The the SOA is is an increase of looking at the federal poverty rate and it increased to a hundred and eighty five percent. And that's up from the hundred and thirty three percent, which was pre SOA or F Y seventeen, F Y twenty one. And then the statewide, how we are calculating the number of low income students we have. It it's done in one of two ways, and it actually will show you both ways on the foundation budget on the next slide. But it it is either the number of your direct certified students in your district, or it is the they use the F Y sixteen low income percentage or whichever number is higher out of those two. And if you go to the next slide, and under this foundation budget, you'll notice, and this is kind of a busy slide, as you go across the top here, under each one of the fourteen or the thirteen categories, it shows you the number of students that fall into each one of those categories. And if you scroll all the way to the right, you can see that we have four hundred, four thousand thirty identified low income students out of fifty six hundred and forty four students district wide. If you drop down to the bottom of that column, column fourteen, it shows you what the per pupil budget is based on that. And just under that, you can, you'll notice that the increases, and I'll show you the increase in our chapter seventy in the next slide. But the increases, twenty six point two percent of the increases are pertaining to the low income foundation budget increase and and funds that will be directed directly to our L learners. And just under that, you see the blue highlighted box where it shows you the two different calculations, the four thousand thirty students, which was the estimated F Y sixteen low income versus what our direct certification number was at thirty seven hundred and thirty two students. So they go with the higher number to calculate that foundation budget. And this year's foundation budget is eighty and a half million dollars. And to put that in perspective, if you go to the next slide, you can see where the increases are. In the first column, it shows where the the number of students district wide, you'll see where we, and we've talked about this, where we've dropped a hundred and seventy one students from F Y twenty one to F Y twenty two, which is a three percent decline in our enrollment. And that is mainly from our kindergarten, first graders. And we're hoping that they will all return starting next year. The eighty million point eight, eighty point five million is a three point four million dollar increase in our foundation budget over last year. And if you jump over to the chapter seventy eight, you notice that our chapter seventy eight is going up three point one million dollars over last year, which is is good news for, good news for us. And then the required local contribution has jumped up, and actually, that's a typo. Says three hundred thousand seven hundred and thirteen, it's actually three hundred and sixty thousand seven hundred and thirteen, and I'll correct that on the next slide. So it, there is a slight increase, the good news is part of our S R grant can be used to offset that difference between F Y twenty one and F Y twenty two local contributions. And we'll go over to the next slide, the last slide. So again, just looking at the chapter seventy increase, I apologize for just one second, I have a windy dog. Sorry about that, I hate to have my windy dog interrupting my budget presentation for the night. But the good news on the on the federal grants front, and we had we had discussed this the last time that we did a quick overview. We weren't sure what the new S R two but grant was going to be. We don't, we now have a firm number, it's seven point four million dollars, which that grant, the RFP should be out this week, obviously, we'll be applying for that. Good news too is we've got the one point six million dollars left from the S R one grant in this, the S R two runs through six thirty of twenty twenty three. And it provides us a ton of flexibility, ranging from supporting or addressing the learning loss through summer school and intensified academies that we would want to put together either during vacations or after school or obviously summertime. It allows us to address the air quality in in physical plants within the buildings. So there's great flexibility that we can use in this seven point four million dollar S R two grant, which we will be obviously applying for coming, starting this this week. So with that, again, just a quick overview, open up to any questions you may have. A highlight there is we've got a three point one million dollar increase in chapter seventy for the district.
I guess Craig, I just have a couple of comments. Just quickly looking at last year's final chapter seventy are, and with the new Student Opportunity Act funding, our per pupil funding increased by thousand nineteen dollars. And the low income portion is, that's on that one spreadsheet, was twenty one point one million versus seventeen point five. So that's three point six million dollars more for us to help narrow the the achievement gaps that we have, so. Good summary.
Yes, thank you. So the good news is that obviously the funding increased, the hundred and seventy one student decline in our enrollment did have an impact on the on the local aid. Not sure if there'll be any adjustments forthcoming, but obviously, the the addition of the S R two money, the seven point four million will help offset some of that difference as well.
Let's hope the I'd like to ask, are you pleased with this, are you happy with this grant, this money's coming in?
I'm I'm sorry, Ms. Reynolds?
Are you happy with this, is this? Are you happy with the what with what's evolving here, with the amount of money that we're getting?
Yeah, I think the Student Opportunity Act, as it is, and again, this is a year two of a seven year plan, is really trying to address the equity issues statewide. And the increase in this S R two grant, the federal grant money of seven point four million is a is a very pleasant surprise. So we've got a lot of work cut out for us, we know that there, this past year has been very difficult. And we've got a lot of ground to catch up on, and hopefully, this funding will allow us to do just that.
So do you feel that Boston has been listening or whoever we addressed about inequities in the past? You feel like we're making some progress?
I think we are, absolutely.
Good.
Mayor, were you trying to say something?
No, I I I just I just commented that I hope the I hope the legislature agrees with the governor. That's, governor proposes and the legislature disposes, so let's hope there, let's hope there's simpatico.
Well, we have a ways to go before the finish line.
You know, not to say that we can count on past performance or comparing this year to almost any year before in our history, but usually, the governor's budget is the most conservative. And if there is additional funding, you know, the House and Senate tack on. But again, given the extent of the pandemic, probably on the state budget as well, and choices they're making, this the S R one and S R two funding will help us out with a variety of things, including, you know, after March twenty eighth, when we have to, you know, pick up the tab for whatever pool testing is going to cost, that'll help on that front, which, you know, our normal school budget wouldn't have been able to support that. So it's it's good to have more than one source, given these historic times.
Okay, I can move into our donations to be accepted. So we have three donations to be accepted. The first one for twenty five hundred dollars, this is a donation from the Reimagine North of Maine and the director, Joe Ferguson. This is donation was made to Longview Middle School to help retain services to rehang the building medallion that was taken down during the roof reconstruction. So I know that Mr. McShay, McShay, he is working very diligently to raise So I know that Mr. McShay, McShay, he is working very diligently to raise funds so that we can get the medallion back up on the building.
We've secured the funds. That's, that will happen in the spring, right?
Okay.
Thanks to Joe Ferguson and Reimagine, they certainly helped on along with other folks. So I don't know if everybody realizes what that, do you all, do you remember what was on there, what it looked like? Did you, you couldn't even tell what it was, right? It's the city seal. And I think it's going to really, well, it's in the legislative building of New City Hall. One of them. The other one is going up prominently on the front of the building. So I think you'll be pleased. It's all, it's done as the city seal. It's all in color, powder coated, sealed. Really looks terrific.
Our second donation is a donation of five hundred dollars made to Ms. Prosser at McKay, Mr. Pierce. And this was made by Ann Anderson, who was a former teacher at McKay, and it is for students' needs. And we have another donation of five thousand dollars. It's actually a reimbursement through the Gareup Grant for McKay's participation in the leader in the membership. So that's a donation of five thousand from Gareup. We also have a number of grants to be submitted. The first one, we've already discussed, it's a seven-point-four million dollar, that's S R two. And that RFP will be worked on, it'll actually be out this week. We do have news on the Extended Learning Time Grant, so we, Longchamp will be submitting a grant for five hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars. That'll be just for the remainder of FY twenty-one. And that grant can be used to support teacher professional development and also can be used to implement vacation academies and summer school this coming summer. We have our Open SciEd Grant, which is twenty to fifty thousand dollars per school. And they're going to be applied for grade six rate from Memorial, Longchamp and McKay. And that's the Open SciEd Middle School Science Curriculum. This will provide support for the implementation of the curriculum. I think we did discuss the Mass Life Science Center Grant, that's a grant up to one hundred thousand dollars and it will be applied to by Pittsburgh High School, and that's to support the environmental science programs. And the last one is Mr. Roach and his team are working on the Capital Skills Grant. There's a max of seventy-five thousand dollars for this next round. And it will be to support his ongoing or the ongoing development of the advanced manufacturing programs that they've already initiated at Pittsburgh High. And that's all I have.
Any questions? Does the committee wish to bundle twenty-one dash forty up through and including twenty-one dash forty-three?
Motion to bundle.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor, Ms. Greenleys?
Yes, sir. Mayor Dina Tully.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragan.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Horgan.
Yes.
Yes, unanimous.
Thank you. Now we vote on accepting that?
Make a motion to, make a motion to accept the bundled grants.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Greenleys, another vote, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor Dina Tully.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragan.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Horgan.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, no need for executive session, I believe?
That is correct. No need for this evening.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Motion made. So we're here a second.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Greenleys, the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor Dina Tully.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Ms. Cragan.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce.
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Horgan.
Yes.
Unanimous.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Careful with the snow.
Yep.